Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the February tenth, two thousand twenty-one Village Buchanan Zone Boards of Appeals Meeting. At this time, I'd like you to stand and join me in the pledge, please. The Pledge of Allegiance. This is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Excuse me, next we have the minutes of January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Does anybody have any corrections or?
I don't.
Marco, I don't have any.
No? Ed?
No.
I don't really have any either, so I'll accept the motion to approve the minutes.
So moved, Mary.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second it, Marco.
Second, Marco, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
And Harmon's not here tonight. I should say, he sent me an email and said something came up, he couldn't make the meeting tonight, and I didn't press him, so, just so you guys know. Okay. So, we have one thing on the agenda tonight. It's a continuation of public hearing, calendar number five dash twenty dash BZ. The public hearing for lot coverage variance for an in-ground pool, swimming pool, on the property located at one seventy-one Corton Street, Jamie Leon. Stephanie, you want to reopen a public hearing?
Yes, yep.
Okay. Take a motion to reopen a public hearing?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Marco and Ed.
Right.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Here we go. Trying to see here. I guess Jamie, are you here for your friend? For your dad? Who's gonna speak?
I'm the, I'm the dad, but I have my engineer who's gonna speak for me.
Okay.
Mr. Roselli.
Yeah, that's, I came under Jamie's link, so it has the wrong name there, but that's me.
Thank you.
You could change your name on the link if you like to. That way, the secretary gets your proper name, if you don't mind.
Okay, how do I do that?
If you scroll, are you on an iPad or?
On a PC, on a Windows PC.
Yeah, on the right-hand side, you should see your name to rename yourself.
Oh, okay.
And then Rosemary, you can see his name after he finishes renaming. There you go, perfect. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Okay. Is it Roselli, Mr. Roselli?
Yes.
Okay. So you wanna give us a little background on what the Leones would like to do, please?
Well, he has a, he has some room in his backyard to put in a, he wants to put in a gazebo, and a pool, in-ground pool, a small in-ground pool, towards the, behind his detached garage. Pool is fifteen by thirty-five, approximately, just under five hundred square feet. That's basically, you know, surrounding patio. And then with drainage, you know, with drains designed for the pool. And that's, that's the crux of the project.
Okay. Excuse me. I guess it was probably two months ago, right, when we first had this application? Wasn't it like December?
Yes.
And there was a lot of accusations made about, about the property. So I went in and entertained any chatter that night about it, but I asked that the building inspector and the engineer from the village, take a look through this stuff and see if there's anything that we've missed or neglected in the past. I have no way of knowing that, but I do, I did get a letter back from George Palmer. And I think, did Brian, did Brian or, did one of you guys send us a letter back?
I don't believe I sent the letter back about that, but Mr. Palmer and I have had conversations about the project.
Okay. And I also have a letter here, just so we got this out in front, that he wants to expand the lot coverage to forty-one and a half percent from what's, what's, the max is thirty percent.
Right.
So, knowing all the drainage things that supposedly are working okay, and the property was raised in the past and so forth, I'm, I don't know where I am with this yet, to tell you the truth. It seems like a very big area variance. And there's criteria and rules and a code to follow for that. Excuse me. Let me just get the right one, so I don't, so I don't watch the plot. I don't have the right number to code right now in front of me. But there's several things that you have to take into consideration for variances, which I'm sure Brian, you know, and Stephanie knows and so forth. So, I have done the best I can to communicate with the board, you know, only one at a time and so forth, to see where and if or how they felt about this. Stephanie, am I missing something here?
No, and I think the code section's two eleven thirty-nine, that deals with the area variances.
Two eleven thirty-nine?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank, oh, it is, sorry, it's right there, I'm sorry.
Oh, no problem.
I got new glasses, too, hard to believe. But anyway, so, to the Leones and the engineer, I'm sure you've, the engineer, you've looked up two eleven thirty-nine? Or have had talks with George Palmer about it?
I believe I've discussed it, I haven't actually looked it up.
Okay. There's seven pretty, pretty obvious, obvious things when you're gonna look at giving a area variance. One is that the variance requested is not substantial in relation to the requirement. Did I read that right, Stephanie?
Yep.
Think so, okay. The second one is that the effect of any increased population density, which may thus be produced upon available services and facilities, is not significant. The third one is there's a substantial change in character of the neighborhood or a substantial deterrent of adjoining properties. I don't think the character of the neighborhood, in my opinion, but the adjoining properties may have an issue. And the fourth one is that the difficulty cannot be alleviated by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than a variance. Excuse me, number five is that the variance, the variance would not cause adverse aesthetic, environmental or ecological impacts on the property or the surrounding areas. And number six is the request, requested variance is the minimum variance necessary to afford relief. That, number seven is that in view of the manner in which the difficulty arose and considering all of the above factors, the interest of justice will be served by allowing a variance. I'll start this off by saying that I think the project's too big. In lieu of the fact of the, the different, the different problems evidently that had pre-existed with the neighbor, but the property being raised back, back when it was, and adding a pool of this size, I think is, I'm not so sure that's a good idea. And I should, I should have added this in. According to George Palmer and Brian yesterday have talked, the things that were, that were, the alleged things were, that were brought to the board's attention, correct me if I'm wrong, you guys, it's been, they've been taken care of. It's basically been okay.
The, the Coltech system was approved in design, but it was not approved as installed. It was excavated and it was opened, and Honda Engineering was there at the time. And they said it actually wasn't built per the approved plan, and that it was acceptable to the approved plan.
Yeah, I'd like to add to that. So in, in being different, all it means is that the number of Coltechs is correct. Their orientation might be a little different, but they're functioning as shown on the original plan. Just as a clarification. So, it's not, it's not exactly per plan, but all the units are there and it's functioning correctly.
Okay, I'm a little bit naive with this water system. Where does the water get pumped to?
The rear of the yard.
Oh, okay. In the south, going south, okay.
Yes.
I'm thinking that, I'm thinking I'm gonna ask the other board members what they think about this variance. I just, I have my doubts about doing this with the amount of property being raised in the past and then adding a pool into it. I'm just, I just really don't have that in the back of my mind right now, so. Somebody convince me.
This is Marco Pigra, may I just ask a couple, a couple questions? It was mentioned earlier that the pool is five hundred square feet. Is that true?
Yeah, fifteen by thirty-five. So that's, you know, four hundred fifty, hold on. The exact number is five hundred twenty-five square feet, if you go fifteen by thirty-five.
Okay, and then the patio?
The patio would be three, three feet. I'm kind, I came up with a number of nine hundred eighty-nine square feet for the pool and the patio.
That's combined?
Yes, that's everything together.
And then there's the gazebo and the patio underneath the gazebo as well? Is that an addition?
Yeah, well, the gazebo I counted separately, but I didn't double count the patio beneath the gazebo. Oh, slot coverage, though. In other words, the gazebo is twenty by twenty, it's four hundred square feet on its own. I just counted the roof, I didn't count the patio underneath it.
Yeah, and I believe we have to count the patio underneath it, correct everyone?
I believe so, too, it's slot coverage.
Right.
But it's directly underneath the roof, so wouldn't, wouldn't that be redundant?
We don't double count it, right. So it's, if, if the, if the roof is twenty by twenty and the patio is twenty by twenty, you're correct, you count it once.
Okay. I thought you were referring to the other end of the pool, one, one on the end towards the garage or something?
No, no.
Okay, just the one by the garage that I'm looking at?
Yes.
Okay. Board members, you wanna weigh in at all, please?
Okay, this is Mary Funchen. Hey, the property is very well-kept, it's very well-maintained. Everything looks like it's been done with, with quality in, in mind. But I think the amount of lot coverage is really a problem. It's already over our thirty percent. And you're talking about moving it up to forty-one point five percent. That's an awful lot of coverage on one piece of property. That doesn't really fit into our code. And I'm not sure that all of those seven criteria have been met for us to be able to give any kind of a variance for that number.
Okay. My view is similar to Gary and Mary, Mary's view. I have a big problem with the amount of lot coverage that's taken here. Granted, we have batched out to the property, and there is a lot of property back there, but that doesn't mean that's gonna, it should be used. The key, amongst other keys in the code, is a variance should be the minimum variance necessary to afford relief. And this is not minimum. This is, this is pretty, pretty big. And I, I do have that concern that we are going, we could be going a little too far here with what we should be able to do. Granted, there's a lot of land back there, but that doesn't mean that's supposed to be used. Another thing that I just would draw attention, and I know the Julianos are not here on the call. I know they had the issue where we're concerned about flooding, but there was another thing they brought up, which was about lighting and use of properties flooded with lights and cameras. And I have to throw that out there also, because that's impacting a neighbor. And we're not supposed to be allowing things that are gonna impact, or if there's any impact, it should be minimal. All right? And if a neighbor's complaining that they've got lights blowing, you know, going into their house, that's a prob, could be, could be a problem. So I bring that out also. But those are my real concerns.
Yeah, and, and I'm, I'm following the same track of thought with the rest of the board members here. And that was kind of the precursor, my question's kind of the precursor to that. I mean, if this has to be scaled down, which I think we all agree this has to be scaled down in some way, you know, you have a couple options here with the pool itself being scaled down, the patio, the gazebo, the patio itself being scaled down. I think it's just incumbent upon us here in the board to have to decide what percentage of lot coverage could we feel comfortable in granting? If we decide to go that way.
I guess my next question should be to Mr. Leon. Do you think you could live with the project being scaled down? Or is it a no-go if you don't get what you want right now?
I got, if we, if we don't put the gazebo, the gazebo, that will be okay. So like, you know, I hear the small patio and the pool. If, if there's an issue on the gazebo, then we can, you know, a small patio in order to have a, you know, the pool. Because like, you know, without the patio, you can't have a pool.
Well, like Marco had suggested, you could scale the size of the pool back.
What do you mean, it's small?
Yeah, make it smaller, obviously, yeah.
I, I have no, what's the option, like, can I understand, what's the small pool? Next option.
The only option I see is if you scale the size of the pool back and alleviate the patio. Is that what basically we're feeling like the board?
Well, you know, I, I think some math has to happen, right? I mean, if we just leave the scale, the pool in there without a patio and a gazebo, what does that give us as far as lot coverage? What does that bring it down to? That, I think we need to know that to, to decide if that's acceptable as far as the percentage of lot coverage.
When you're saying no, you're saying no, no gazebo, if you take out the gazebo?
That wipes out four hundred square feet, I'm just not quite sure how that, I guess I'm not that math fluid, but where that puts us for a percentage of lot coverage?
Well, you know what, before he goes crazy here, what, what are we looking at?
That gets us below forty percent, that gets it to like thirty-nine percent, if you take out the.
They still have to go a little, still have to go, I think, lower than that.
I, I agree with Ed.
It's gotta go down a bit.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't, I don't know what we're looking at as a board, but, you know. I don't know off the top of my head, I guess I would have to see exactly what the math is. I mean, if you went down, it's a forty-one and a half, if you went to like thirty-six, what size would the pool be then?
Thirty-six percent?
I'm just throwing a number out there, just to find out what we're looking at here.
Or to back into it, what size pools, what size of pools come in? I'm not even, I'm not sure if this is a prefab pool that gets dropped in, or if it's a custom-built pool.
I don't know either.
Yeah.
Go to thirty-six percent, we'd go with, well, the pool would be about four hundred square feet. And it would just, it would just be a pool, it wouldn't have, it wouldn't have patio. Let me ask you this, I mean, we'd have to have stepping stones or something around it. I mean, you can't just have a pool in the middle of the yard, right? So would you count the stepping stones as coverage if they were separate?
Well, I think, yeah, we have to count it, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't be as dense as having a poured footing, or poured sidewalk all the way around, if you will.
No, it wouldn't, but let's, let's just say for, you know, just for sake of the argument, without, you know, I don't know if I wanna start counting individual stepping stones right now. And I'm not sure everybody wants to wait around for that. But let's just say, the number you threw out, thirty-six percent, yields just about a four hundred square foot pool. Gets us down to that number that you mentioned. You know, with some stepping stones around it, you know, maybe you're talking thirty-seven percent, something like that. I mean, to get a pool much smaller than that, and you know, I don't know, you know, Jamie's gonna have to weigh in on that, I mean, four hundred square feet, twenty by twenty.
I'm not gonna spend money, pay taxes for a pool, and then to have a pool, like, you understand? Everybody around here has a fifteen, like, you know, most of the overground pools are, like, you know, bigger and as small and proper than what I have. I don't know, it's just because it's the pass, or because it's me, Jimmy Leon, because I, you understand, so. Because Mr. Lupica is giving trouble, because you guys just approved somebody's pool for, like, you know, in, in the medium before, for somebody without the proof, nobody.
Three percent.
Yeah. He, you're all, sorry. Go ahead, Gary, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's right, that was three percent. We, the Oregon pool, it was basically three percent.
He, you're already.
I'm not wrong about that, right?
No, you're correct.
No, you're not, you're not. Yeah, 'cause right now, you're already at thirty-three point nine percent lot coverage. And, which is, you know, if we're to do comparative to the previous property that a pool is approved, they're up to thirty-three percent, so that's why they were granted it. But that was one of the reasons why, after assessing the property.
So what's the size what you will approve, to see if it's fair for me to, you know, to pay? Otherwise, I would just live there, you know? Like, you know, that's a nice thing to say, listen. I spent so much money in this town, like, you understand, to pay, I'm paying taxes for my property. I spent, like, you know, putting a brand-new house, keep it beautiful, nice, but, you know, I need your, you know, your support too, because like, you know, I'm not against taxes, like, you know, I know that tax has to be paid, and I do.
But it has nothing to do with what we're talking about here, Mr. Leon, okay? So please take that out of the equation. We have a code to live by, and we've gotta live by it. And while we may grant some variances, we're trying to be as reasonable as we can, given our circumstances, and, and that's where we're coming from. I understand you've got a lot of hassle from some of your neighbors. I get it, I do. It's just that we're, we're trying to do the best thing we can within the code we work with.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I, I really, I understand where you're coming from. But I think that we just, I, I don't know if, I don't know if there's any way for Mr. Roselli either to do some work on this, and maybe again, put this over, and maybe have some further discussions and re-stake the area to take a look at it? That might be something.
Are you, are you asking, Ed, I believe you may be asking this, just to really check and see if the coverage right now truly is thirty-three point nine percent?
Well, no, I'm just talking in terms of Mr. Leon. You know, if we're asking, we're gonna ask him to scale it back. And Mr. Roselli is able to work with him on that. And we had the opportunity to go back out to the, well, of course, now we've got all kinds of snow out there, so it's a little difficult. But I, I, I don't know, again, given our, the time we're here now, given the fact that snow, whether or not he's able to do it and stake it out for us, so then we have a visual.
How I wanted to ask you is, what's the maximum percentage that can you allow us to, to cover? If we have, if we are covered, already we have covered thirty-one percent, I think, with the garage and everything, that's what we, we have to do.
You have almost thirty-four percent coverage now, you have thirty-three point nine.
Oh, thirty-three point nine, that's what I get.
You have almost thirty-four percent.
So, I can understand. If it's like, you know, like, it's gonna be a very small pool, then we just quit and just live there, you understand, so. It's not gonna be any problem.
Yeah, I, I, I understand.
Not much money, you understand, by putting underground pool, because I want something nice. Because like, you know, for, in order to put, you know, something small, then I prefer to sell the property, move to where I can put and live the way I want.
Mr. Leon, I, I said it before, the way you have your property is beautiful. It's one of the nicest properties in the village. You have it maintained immaculately. And.
Thank you very much.
If there was more property there, and you were able to, to use it, so that you didn't take up that much space, I think everyone here would.
Like, you know, I make the investments, think like, if I like Buchanan, you know, that's the world, the place I, I, I grow up, my kids, and I like it. So that's why I always think, like, you understand, to have a pool. But there are regulations, and I, I agree with you. But the thing is, like, you know, what I did, I, I don't know, you know, I, I didn't make a math before I, I, like, you know, garage, I need a garage, I need a house, what I need. So, but, you know, if I don't have enough property to put a pool, that's fine. But like, you know, that's what I'm asking you, what is the, like, you know, what will you grant? Like, you know, if we do a pool, but, like, you know, I said, I don't want the gazebo, it's okay. If you let me put a pool, it's fine, like, you know, but the pool has to be a little bigger, because otherwise, it's, it's like, you know, to make an investment, you know, future investment, it's gonna be more than fifty thousand dollars, probably thirty thousand dollars, forty thousand, I don't know. But in order to do that, you know, I, I need to be comfortable the way I want. But if, like, you know, it's not gonna be possible, I don't wanna waste your time, and also the same thing as me.
I didn't realize, I guess before, when I was looking at the, the letter, that it was forty-one point five when it was thirty percent. I didn't realize it was thirty-three point nine or thirty-four percent. So, to be honest with you, it's, it's just too big a project for there, in my mind. But, you know. I, I don't think, I don't think giving them, from thirty-four to give them, you know, to thirty-six, like I suggested, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a little kiddie pool, like.
Yes, exactly.
I, I mean, I don't see, see the point even doing that, so. You know, I'm sorry, I wish I could, but.
That's fine, that's fine, you know, you understand, so, that's, I understand that. Like, you know, I told, like, you know, we were covering like thirty percent, and then adding, like, you know, and also, I, I didn't know how much, you know, you can allow, forty percent, thirty percent, like, you know, I don't, I don't know nothing about that.
Well, that's why I read those seven things off here. And I, I, I get it, because I wanted to put a dish in on my house thirty years ago to the right of it, and I couldn't do it, so I had to put a dormer up. It's the way it was, you know? But.
I think we're getting, we're getting down to percentages here, we're getting down to specifics. I mean, if we go to, I mean, you mentioned thirty-six percent, Mr. Bell. If we go to thirty-seven percent, I mean, that's.
I mean, that's three percent on the size of the property, that's, that gets them as almost as five hundred square foot pool. Gotta be around thirty-seven percent coverage, but I don't know if that's, you know, if that's relevant, or if you're just looking at the size of the pool itself, if, you know, if that's getting too technical, I don't know, you know, I don't know the answer to that, but that's basically what we're talking about here. That'd be just a pool, you know, maybe with some stepping stones around it, you gotta have something around it, you know.
I get that, I don't, I just, I just think, unfortunately, the situation with the way it is now, and digging up the ground again, and putting a pool in, and then all that, all that, what do you call it, stormwater relief or whatever, it's gonna have to be reconfigured probably, at least some of it.
Some of it, yeah, some of it.
So, you know, to be honest with you, I don't think it's worth, I don't think it's worth him spending his money, personally. That's just me, though, it's up to him, I'm just saying, you know. Okay. I mean, it's a lot of money to spend on a pool if you can't get what you want. I get that, you know.
Yeah, yeah, yes, exactly, yes, because like, you know, if I can't have that, like, you know, that pool, at least the pool, like, you know, another gazebo, because I can't use my garage as a gazebo, you know, just like have it all in the back, what I need in a small patio, at least, like, you know, very small to be with the pool, if that, like, you know, if I can't do the pool, the fifteen by thirty, or thirty-five, like, you know, that, that would be good, because otherwise, too small is, you know, too much money to spend and not to have it.
Oh, I get you, I'm with you on that. I don't, I don't really see a way.
Chairman, that's what, Chairman, I'm sorry, Marcus, don't forget, it's a public hearing, I don't know if you wanna open it, when you wanna open it to the public as well, so I just wanna throw that out there, not to forget.
Well, I wanted to, I wanted to get through with the board, if we were, if the board's not not interested in giving them the variance, then you could let the public in, but it really won't matter.
Gary, this is Marcus, I mean, from my perspective, I just said forty-one and a half percent, it's just too great a variance. And just based on our discussion right now, even if we were to grant thirty-six percent, which is a pretty reasonable number, and it still doesn't accomplish what Mr. Leon wants to accomplish, so I'm with you about granting the variance, just, you know, I'm not, I'm not for granting that variance. But I'm interested to hear other parties.
The same would be for myself, and it's unfortunate, only because, as we said, the variance seems to be too big, and we could potentially entertain a much smaller number, but it's been brought up. Mr. Leon has to make some investment here, and not just the pool, as we were talking about, the stormwater, the drainage, and that's gonna be a big investment, and, you know, I hate to tell somebody, a village resident, you can't do it, but then again, you know, it's, it's, it's just a lot of money to sink into, and and I agree, the variance as requested is not appropriate, I believe, under our code.
I concur, it, the variance is too large under the code, and that's what we have to go by the code. And you do wanna make wise investments, and we appreciate what you've done already with your property, it's beautiful, and well-kept, but at this point, the forty-one point five percent is just way too high.
Okay. I don't know, is it, Stephanie, is it appropriate to let the people in now, and then, you know?
Yes, people that wanna be heard, you should, you should hear people that are asking to be heard.
That's no problem, I mean, as a board, I think we've made up our mind, we're not gonna give the variance, so.
Listen, if you're not gonna give me the variance, I don't wanna go over, like you said, it's okay, I don't want nobody to know about what's going on, it's okay, stay there, that's it, that's no, we're not gonna, we deny it, that's it, that's the only thing I wanna do.
Okay.
Because the people are gonna change, if people are gonna change it, then I will do, you understand, but you're not gonna change, because it's you guys, you know, and you have your rules, that's fine, you do understand that thing. You know, you're not gonna make a difference to everybody, you know, what's going on.
I wanna assure you, Mr. Leon, that this is strictly by the code and the board, not, we have to listen to other residents, yes, we do, but they don't make us make a decision. They might throw some points out back and forth, but, you know, we make the decision.
That's what I mean, so you make the decision, so what I, I don't wanna put it, like, you know, in the newspaper for tomorrow, that I was denied because of this. You have the rules, you know the rules, and I, I agree with what you, what you can do, you can, you can, that's no problem. Because I don't want a small pool either, you understand, so if I want a pool, I will move, I will move where I can put a pool.
Yeah. Stephanie?
Yeah.
Do, can, can we vote on this, on not accepting the variance before we let the people in, or should we let them in first?
No, in order to vote, you have to close the public hearing, right, and then vote, so while it's open, you should hear people who are asking to be heard.
Okay. All right, Mr. Leon, we're gonna let the public speak now, so, but I think you know where we're at. We're not gonna grant to you, so, I'm sorry.
That's fine, that's no problem.
At least we're upfront about it, you know?
Right, right, at least I learned something.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's fine, thank you very much, so we'll talk to you later.
Okay. Marcus, you wanna let who's ever out there in?
Sure, Chairman, I'll let you see him, I can open up whoever you want to go first, there's two people raised their hands. Laura or Mr. Lupica, who do you want to open it first?
Have they, have they been able to listen to the meeting so far?
Yes, yes, they have. Who do you want first?
Doesn't matter.
Okay, Laura, I let Laura's allowed to speak.
Okay.
Okay, Laura, you're on.
Okay, thanks, no, I just wanted to say, we all pay taxes, okay? I know it's been mentioned, well, I pay tax, we all pay taxes, and we're all looking to have nice property and to love where we are, and we do, but that, that kind of irked me a little bit, we all pay taxes, and we all wanna have nice things, but we have to also be respectful of the people that we live around, otherwise, we have to live somewhere far away, but when you have neighbors, then you have to be also respectful of that, so, that's really all I wanted to say, you know what? We had a situation with the property being raised, and that was dealt with, or whatever, and has nothing to do, because you, Mr. Leon, then not at all, but, you know, we just all have to, I think we all kind of want the same thing, we all wanna love where we are and like our property, and but we also have to be respectful of the people that are around us. So, that's it.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna put Mr. Lupica on now, hold on a second.
Okay, yep.
Yeah, hold on a second, I'm trying to get him on, hold on. Okay, Mr. Lupica, you're on.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, I thank you for hearing me, good night, or good evening. Mary, Ms. Fung, I just wanna touch base, he does have a beautiful home, but we don't judge what we do on beauty. We judge it on, you know, principles.
Yes, it's also very well-maintained.
I, I, I'm agreeing with you.
Okay.
Unfortunately, he has impacted his neighbors, he wasn't a good neighbor, like Lori said, we all wanna be respected. He came in, he wanted to build five feet from my property line with a new structure, five feet.
Okay, let's just, let's just think, that has nothing to do with this variance.
Well, I realize it, but it's gonna add on, I don't think anybody would really want this. Also, he's impacting, he impacted Lori with this lot coverage, as far as raising it eighteen inches. He's impacted my property, he's also dug a trench twenty-five feet that goes to the neighbor in the back. Is that being a good neighbor to run your water off your property into your neighbor's property? So, he's really not that good of a neighbor. Now, let's touch base on, on his lot coverage. He was at the thirty percent, he added pavers in the back, which is not part of the thirty percent. So, he's also gonna put a pool in, if he was granted that, he would just put pavers around that pool without the variance, and once it's approved. So, he's already taken liberties by adding pavers in the back of his house to begin with, which is advancing his lot coverage. Now, also, did we do a full hydraulic engineering analysis to see where his water's going?
A couple of months ago, you brought to my attention some forty pages.
Yes.
And I, that meaning I wouldn't entertain any of that, until our building inspector and our builder's engineer went through the files, and whatever they had to do, to certify what is done.
Okay.
They have done it at this point.
Yeah, I mean, the fact that we had to come back and look at the call texts, and sign off on it, how did we miss that?
You know, I can, I know, I know I've never made a mistake in my life, so, I'm sure.
No, we all make mistakes, but this is an intricate part of, you know, absorbing the water and taking the water from your property and putting it into a space.
Okay, but you do, you do understand that it has, it has been checked out, and it's in working order.
Yes, I do, I do, but unfortunately, he's raised his property, now it's impacting my property. So, I was told, maybe, maybe we need to get some wells in there, monitoring wells, to see how the water's affecting me, and that would be the absorption. You know, we let him raise it eighteen inches, that's unfathomable. I mean, unless Lori and I went to these board meetings, he would have had his water running directly into Lori's property, they would never put up that rock wall. I mean, is that a good neighbor? She had a pond in her backyard. So, you know, I'm a little, you know, obviously, I'm a little aggravated because of the whole situation.
I'm not here to judge him as a neighbor, I'm here to judge the variance that he asked for.
Well, I asked, and you're entertaining how we can increase by a couple of percentages, but I, what I'm saying to you is, this guy will take liberties, he's already taken liberties of putting his lot coverage of what would it should have been on the original.
That's certainly your opinion, Mr. Lupica, you're entitled to it.
Well, you're telling me he didn't take liberties of increasing his lot coverage?
I have no idea if he did, I never met him.
Look, Mr. Bell, I don't even think the guys have the original plans in the file, I know I.
That's why I had the engineer and the building inspector look into it.
But you don't have.
That's their job.
I know you don't have the original plans.
Yes, we do.
You got them now?
Yes, we do, it's in a completely set out by itself, I have them.
You have them, okay, that's great, but, but those pavers weren't on the original plans that are behind his house now. So, he's increased his lot coverage without any variance there, and now, is he gonna take more? My question is, is he gonna take more liberties in the future? If you gave him a certain size pool, then he puts down the pavers, then he puts down something else.
Yeah, but, Mr. Lupica, we've already decided, I believe we haven't voted on it yet, but we're not granting a variance.
No, I understand that, Mark, and I appreciate that, but I'm just saying, if you're telling him that he can scale it down to a smaller size, what I'm saying is, at what point does he not start taking liberties again?
Mr. Lupica, we didn't deny this variance because of you, it's because of the terms that are in our code.
And we should have codes like that, Gary, and I.
Well, we do, we do.
Yes, and that's good.
And you're bringing up stuff that happened in the last couple of years, which doesn't concern us about this variance.
But he, he's not covered with the pavers that he has behind his house right now, right?
Okay, I, I don't know, I don't know what else I can tell you, he's not gonna get the variance, so if you've got something personal against him, I guess you gotta get an attorney. So, I could tell you, I don't know.
Listen, I get along with all my neighbors, Gary, unfortunately.
Obviously not.
What?
Obviously not.
Well, this one has impacted quite a few people, I mean, if you were impacted down at your house, wouldn't you be a little aggravated?
I suppose, though.
How about if your neighbor next to you built five feet from your property line?
Oh, come on, come on, Mr. Lupica, come on.
Mr. Lupica, and I'm gonna also address this, not only to the board, but to Marcus, we're now astray. I think that we all understand where this is going. I don't know what happened in the past, and I can't concern, or we can't concern ourselves with what might happen, because we're not at the stage.
But you have to take the fact that he's already taken liberties, and he could take them again if you.
But, Mr. Lupica, if you believe what you are telling us, then it is up to you to then make a complaint to the building inspector, so it is investigated, okay?
I did mention it to Brian when we spoke.
Okay, but that, now it's where it's at.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
Thank you for your comments, does the board have anything else they would like to bring forth? After we close the public hearing and vote, I have something I just wanted to talk to the board about, real quickly. So, there's no, no more public, Marcus?
No, those were the only two, and you addressed them both, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion.
Ed and Marco?
Yes.
I guess you gotta make, somebody has to make a proposal to deny the, to deny the variance. Right, Stephanie?
Yep, if you're gonna rule, if you're gonna vote on it tonight, that's what you're gonna do.
Well, I think we're not gonna waste anybody's hours' time, are we? So, somebody makes a motion to deny the variance, and we can.
I move to deny the variance.
Second?
Second.
Second, by Ed?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, thank you for your time. Brian and the cooks, thank you for your time, and George, you too, buddy.
Hey, thank you.
Have a good night, Mr. Bell.
Yeah, have a good night.
Thank you, good night.
Listen, I just wanted to, to talk to the board, you know, they're.
Is everybody off?
Wait, wait, Gary, just, do you wanna do an executive session, or keep it open to the public?
It's executive session, I think.
Okay.
So, you gotta move to.
I'm gonna talk about a decision that the village board's gonna make. Is that, would that be considered an executive?
That's hard for me to know, you can do an advice of counsel and go private if you'd like, so we can figure out what it is you're doing.
Okay, that's a no one I make, so, let's try that one out.
So, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing here?
We did that. Close, they gotta move to close the public meeting and then adjourn to executive session, for advice of counsel.
So, I'll make that motion then.
Ed, I'll second it.
Mary, second it, Marco and Mary, all in favor?
Aye.